Good evening and welcome to the Kingsburg City Council Regular Meeting. The council chambers are open to the public at 100% capacity and thank you for filling it tonight. It's nice to have all of you. Today is Wednesday, August 3rd, 2022. Tonight, our invocation will be given by Pastor Ricky Chambers from the Kingsburg Community Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you can, please stand with me.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you grateful for another day, for the breath in our lungs. And this time, we humbly lift up our community to you. We entrust it into the care of your hands. We ask for your grace and your mercy to abound in and among us. May you fill our hearts with compassion and love for each other. As your word says, the whole of the law is summed up in this one command, "Love your neighbor as yourself." Love does no harm to a neighbor, therefore, love is the fulfillment of the law. So may your spirit of power and of love come among us now, bringing us peace and comfort amidst every day. So God, I lift up every council member here and our city mayor, strengthen them. We thank you for them. Just continue to give them discernment to lead wisely. Thank you for the leaders of our community, for the police department, the fire department, our city employees, our city manager. We pray you just provide for their every need and strengthen them for the high calling you've given them. So God, we ask you your blessing over this time, over this meeting. Thank you that you're with us, thank you that you love us, and you've promised to always be with us. To Jesus, let me pray. Amen.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You can be seated. I will call to order the 6:00 PM regular session meeting. Madam Clerk, can you please do the roll call?
Here.
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 Here. Item number two is to approve our agenda.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item three tonight is presentations, and listed under that, we have none. So we will move on to item number four, which is public comment. This is a time for any citizen to come forward and address the city council on any issue within its jurisdiction that is not listed on the agenda tonight. There's a maximum of five minutes allowed per speaker. And just as a reminder, we are not allowed to respond. We'll start in the back. Do we have anyone in the very back row for public comment that is not on our agenda tonight? Hey, come on up to the podium and state your name, and if you're a resident of Kingsburg. Our city clerk has put the timer up there for you. Yeah, just right here.
My name's Garrison Jones. My family and I lived here most of our lives, and I just wanted to let the council know what I feel is a public nuisance. And I know I'm going to make a lot of people angry, but that concert through July, I enjoy it myself, but the parking is terrible. And I have people knocking at my door when I'm trying to eat dinner and want me to move my car. The cannon fires gotta stop. It's caused my dog to chew a large tub for watering. I can't have company over on Thursday nights. And it's just the trash cans. People put our trash cans, they'll put them up in the yard so they can park there. So then, when the garbage comes up next morning, if it's in the yard and you don't catch it, they don't get picked up. So, well, it's recycled, it's not the garbage, it's the recycle we sit out there. I was wondering if there's anything we can do to eliminate the cannons altogether, use an alternative means, and possibly kind of be issued some parking cones or something. My garage and driveway was taken out years before I ever bought the house. I didn't even know it had it. And so I park in the street. So you see the situation it puts on me. I live on 16th, right between Tulare and Union, on the west side, in a little small house. My grandson and I live there, and it's really a nuisance for me. And I can tell you, I talked to Carolyn Kirk, she's nearly 90 years old, she's the neighborhood grandma. She doesn't like the cannon fire. Nobody likes the cannon fire. I know it's kind of childish and stupid as far as I am concerned, but some people enjoy it. But if we could just get rid of the cannon fire because of what's doing to all of our pets and the windows and alarm that go off, we would really like that. It's a little excessive, I think, for our town. I just want a peaceful community. So what brought this, I tried to put a rational and kind statement out on the internet, Neighborhood News. I got, I was really treated quite nasty by a lot of people, told to move if I didn't like it. The guy that does cannon fires told me that he fired them long before I went here. Well, funny, my fans have been here since 1890s, so you tell me how long. I've been here most of my life, most of my 70 years, and I just don't need those people. One lady told me to move, well, actually, all three of these three people, it's really quite rude. And I thought, man, I don't need this. So I just want to let the council know, that's a real nuisance for people that live there. And I don't know if anybody's ever addressed this before to you folks, but it's a pain to live there. And I realize it's only one month out of a year, but that one month is still disruptive. It's still something that you guys should be known about. It's not fun at all, living. And if I had known when I bought the house that this happens every July, I never would have, but there's no way the salesman, Mr. Lundgren, when he was alive, he wasn't even aware of what was going on. Or he would have, he would have told me, I know he would have. So, you know, I bought the house not aware of this, and anyway, I'm just asking the council to look into this and do something about the cannon fire mostly. Secondly, if I could be issued some cones or something to park out in front of my own home, so I don't have to walk. I don't get around much very well. I don't like parking two blocks away from my house just because there's an event. That's not fair. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you. Can you leave your contact message, information with our staff so that they can get it to the right people, please?
Sure.
Thank you. Anyone else in the back row that would like to give public comment that is not on our agenda tonight? Okay, second to the back row? Third to the back row?
Ms. Thorpe, I'd like to defer till after the other speakers make up.
Okay. The row in front of him? Okay, the front row, any, okay, public comment, then come on up, state your name, and if you're a resident of Kingsburg.
I need some help bringing up my visuals, please.
Okay.
If we can go right there and be on the side, that'd be great.
Still a teacher at heart, huh? Mm-hmm.
The 1950s mobile bar. It's mobile. Okay, Ken, can I have a moment to set this up?
Sure. Okay.
I didn't know if I would have sturdy tables, so I had to have a sturdy table. Okay.
Can you state your name, and if you're, if you can state your name, and if you're a resident of Kingsburg?
My name is Steve Lane. I'm a resident of Kingsburg. And good evening, City Council of Kingsburg. We, the people of Kingsburg, are here to address the South Kings GSA and Kingsburg's membership, and the amount Kingsburg is obligated to pay per acre foot of recharge water. In 2016, Selma, Kingsburg, Parlier, Sanger, and Fowler were paying $130 an acre foot for recharge from CID. Of that 130, 100 went to a savings account, a savings account for each city had their own account for recharge basins, pipelines, and other infrastructure. The remaining $30 was for conveyance, moving water from place to place. In essence, after that is done, the water is free. In 2017, Kingsburg, along with Parlier, Sanger, Delray, Fowler, formed the South Kings GSA. Selma was going to join, then opted out and went with CID, and they became the Central Kings GSA. The South Kings GSA then signed a 10-year agreement with CID, which I do not understand. They broke the other agreement, Kingsburg did, at $130 an acre foot. I did not understand that, but it took me five minutes to figure it out. The South Kings GSA then signed a 10-year agreement with CID. Their only water source to get water to recharge is CID. I called every irrigation district, none of them can deliver water to Kingsburg. The total cost for the first five years is $5,925,000. The contract is then revisited after five years. Let's go over that. Year one, Kingsburg, whoops, that's a dollar sign, wrong one. Kingsburg pays $395. You guys paid $102,000 for that water acre. Year two, Kingsburg pays 395, and this is in the GSA, per acre foot. You paid 200, I can't remember if it's written down here, let me get my paper, please. 2021, 22, you paid $274,402. Okay? Number three. Could not find that information, but it's going up at 8% a year, it's somewhere around $509,000 that will be for Kingsburg water. Year four. I figured it's 51% because it's going up 8% a year, if this holds true. Not sure it's happening, but if it holds true, $805,000. Now, I'm not going anywhere, anywhere farther with that. Kingsburg and the South Kings GSA is obligated to buy 15,000 acre feet of water in these Five years of water, $395,000, or excuse me, $395 an acre foot, $5,925,000. That's a lot of money. In those five years, Selma, our neighbor, twice our size, to the north, pays $130 an acre foot. $130. It has not gone up. Now, after five years, I believe in, Mr. Henderson, you can correct me? You revisit this contract after five years. In this contract for 10 years, there is an inflation clause. In that inflation clause, is that correct?
I think there's a CPI clause, yes.
I heard inflation from the water master in Selma. Okay, now, with the inflation clause, right here, more money. With the inflation clause, more money. With the inflation clause, more money. With the inflation clause, more money.
Mr. Lane?
With the inflation clause...
Just to let you know, you only have about 10 more seconds.
More money. I only need five more seconds. This is a, I hope this holds, bad deal. The city of Kingsburg is going to be on the rope for millions of dollars joining this GSA. Okay? Millions. And if you want to, need to go a little farther, I can tell you how to get out of it. Yes, you don't want to know. Thank you for your time. I hope the city of Kingsburg sees this and asks a lot of questions because this is a bad deal. Can I get some help leaving in for somebody?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve.
Anyone else in the front row have public comment? Okay, then we'll go back to the third row. We had someone that wanted to give public comment. State your name, and if you're a resident of Kingsburg.
David Silva, District 1. I'm a resident at 251 West Sunset. And just to expand on what Steve Lane is saying, because I was part of, on the onset of, I also, let me back up. I'm a grower in the CID, which is a consolidated irrigation district, and I'm also a resident. So I'm wearing two hats today in this arena. And I was at the meeting where Mr. Henderson, our city manager, proposed this bad deal, because it is a bad deal, in my opinion. And I addressed him at the meeting and said, "Where else were you going to get the water if you didn't get it from CID?" And he had no explanation at that meeting, if you remember. He said you had other ways, and you wouldn't discuss it in that forum. But I knew you didn't have that. I knew you didn't have it because CID is where the water's coming from. It was in the city's best interest to go along with Selma. Selma was smart enough to back out of that bad deal and go, "We want to be part of the CID GSP." So, fast forward, I also reached out to Ms. Roman, which was then the mayor, and I have texts to prove it. And I said, "Ms. Mayor, this is a bad deal, and what the city manager's representing is not good for the citizens, and we are all going to pay more for water." And we're lucky, we are lucky as Kingsburg residents, I'll tell everybody right now, because it could have been a whole lot higher, and it probably will be a whole lot higher going into the future. So it didn't have to be, but it is now. And like Steve says, there is a way out, potentially, but it's going to take a lot of doing. Now, I also reached out to Vince Palomar. Vince Palomar was the only one, in my opinion, that did a proper vetting procedure and looked at the information and said, "This is a bad deal." And I believe at that time, he tried to educate the other council members to the fact that it was a bad deal. But to no avail, so the city council voted and passed that they were going to go on their own with the other cities. Okay? It really is a bad deal. I don't think anybody can say it's a good deal paying more for water because it's going to keep increasing. And in my opinion, people that voted for that should be held accountable. Okay? Maybe you can't be fired, but you cannot be reelected. And this was negligence on the behalf of several people in the city council that we are all paying more for water, and it didn't have to happen. It did not have to happen. And I want to make that very, very clear. And I have two minutes left, and I will defer my time because I think that I've illustrated my point here very, very clearly and concisely. And if anybody wants to give me a call, I'll even give my personal phone number out, 352-8799. Because as a grower in CID, I went to those meetings, and I'm very aware of the things that transpired back in 16, 17, and 18. And although the city manager may not remember it, I remember it like it was yesterday. Okay? So thank you for your time. I appreciate all of you and all the work that you do, but this was a very bad deal. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to make public comment before I close it? Okay, seeing none, then I will close public comment, and we will move on to item five, which is consent calendar. Tonight on consent calendar, we have 5.1 through 5.7. Are there any council members that would like to pull any of these items?
I'd like to pull 5.3.
Okay, we'll pull 5.3. Any other items?
Nope.
Okay, can I get a motion then to pass the others minus 5.3? Make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. And Councilmember Purcell, you have the floor for 5.3.
It's just questions about the striping project. I know members of the public have brought concerns specifically regarding the schools and when that's going to start. Do we have timelines for that?
Sure, the city engineer's here. Do you want to address that, Dave?
Hi, good evening. Members of the council, Dave Peters, city engineer. Yeah, so with tonight's action, you would award the contract. We've already had a pre-construction meeting with the contractor, and they are scheduled to start on Monday. First order of work will be to getting all of the work around all of the schools done and completed, and that will be done by Tuesday night.
The striping will be done by Tuesday, so first school starts.
Correct.
Awesome. That is exactly what I was hoping for. Thank you. I don't want to further with that.
Then we'll need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries for 5.3. Moving on to regular calendar, item 6.1. We are going to have a public hearing for Prop 218 election, which is solid waste. We have a staff report by Public Works Director Daniel Galvez. Our city clerk, oh, let me open, open public comment first, our public hearing. Our city clerk, Pelzgard, and staff will begin to open and tally protest ballots at the table in front. Ballots can be received until the closing of the public hearing tonight. Our presentation by Public Works Director Daniel Galvez.
Good evening, council. Here back again to host the public hearing for our Prop 218, Prop 218 for solid waste. To begin the public hearing, we'll have Alison Lusovichis with LNT do a quick presentation.
Hello, good evening. So tonight, I have a brief summary presentation. It's all information we've discussed at length at other city council meetings, and it is intended to summarize the information in the rate report that's been already accepted by city council, and also give a little more background to the Proposition 218 notice that the public has received as well. So it looks like we skipped ahead a little bit here. Let me back up. Okay. So to give some background about the city's past solid waste rates, they have not increased in many years since 2009. So when we think about inflation, all the costs that have increased all these years since 2009, solid waste rates have remained exactly the same for all those years. So this is the first rate review in quite some time. Your solid waste provider is Mid Valley Disposal, and the city first contracted with them in 2014. And Mid Valley Disposal increases rates annually by the Consumer Price Index. So even though the city has not raised rates in all these years, your underlying costs from Mid Valley have been increasing. So rates have not been keeping up with those cost increases over time. The Solid Waste Fund is an enterprise fund, and that's a fancy way of saying it's its own business unit within the city, meaning it should be financially self-sufficient through rates. The rate study process and the Prop 218 notice covers five years of rate adjustments. The first rate change is proposed for September 1st, and the subsequent years are proposed for July 1st, which corresponds with the city's fiscal year, so that's easier for budgeting So Proposition 218 is how service charges in California are governed. Rates must be reasonable to the cost of service. So basically, we did a cost of service study, an economic analysis of what the expenses actually are to the city. And then rates must be fair based on how customers take service. And as I mentioned, we conducted a cost of service rate study, which was reviewed in detail by city council. A notice of this public hearing tonight was mailed to all property owners. The notice must be mailed within greater than 45 days. And then it is a protest ballot procedure, so if more than 50% of eligible customers submit a ballot, then the rate adjustment cannot be implemented. So this chart just explains the current residential rates. Most customers pay 27.60, so that's a combination of refuse, recycling, and green waste. And we don't have to go over every number in these few charts, it's just to illustrate that customers are charged based on the number of pickups per week and the size of their container. And we will continue that rate method, and that helps establish proportionality, that people are charged based on how they take service from the city. So the heart of the rate study is always why rates are increasing based on costs. So as I mentioned, Mid Valley has increased rates, or the underlying cost to the city every year, so we need to keep up with those adjustments. There's also city administrative staffing, budgeting, associated with solid waste that needs to be covered as well. And under solid waste, there's also street sweeping, and we looked into that, and there are new areas of the city that were not previously budgeted for, that we need to account for. And there's a change in disposal of refuse, where previously that could be composted on city property, but now I believe it has to be disposed of off-site, and there's like tipping and landfill-related fees with that. So the Solid Waste Enterprise has operated at a deficit for many years, which means that the cost to provide service is greater than the actual money the city was collecting. So in terms of a business, it's in the red. It's been negative for quite some years, and this is a big adjustment to course correct, get back on stable financial footing, and make the fund financially stable. We are also recommending that the rates include about a 15% fund balance to be accumulated over time, and this is a bit of a financial cushion. Almost all city funds have a rate reserve target, just in case of emergencies or unexpected expenditures. If inflation is higher than expected, you have some financial reserves baked in just to cover any unforeseen costs. But the main factor driving the rate adjustment is new legislation. So Senate Bill 1383. All agencies across California are dealing with SV 1383 cost increases. The city now must provide organics collection to all city residents and businesses, and the goal is to reduce organic waste going to landfills. But again, all solid waste providers across the state are facing these types of new cost increases and new services. So the rate study is based on actual costs, so we worked very closely with Mid Valley's information, all the different types of rate categories they have, what the costs are to the city, and how those costs may increase in the future. And so we compared Mid Valley's actual cost billed to the city versus the amount of money you're collecting currently. So if there was no rate increase, what would the difference in costs look like? And so if there's no rate adjustment, the city would lose about $2 a month on every residential customer. And that pattern holds true for the most popular commercial categories as well. Really, all commercial categories, these are just the most popular ones, the most common rate categories, is that the city would lose money on every single rate category and continue to operate at a deficit and not achieve financial stability for the solid waste fund. So the plan is for the first rate increase to meet service provider costs and allow the city to start covering its administrative and operating costs. And what that corresponds to is slightly larger increases for commercial customers, mostly to account for the organics waste recycling. Most residential customers already have the green waste bins, which provide organics waste disposal. So the rate adjustment is based on that first year aligning with costs, and then years two through five of the rate plan are inflationary. So we've put in illustrative 5.5% inflationary, illustrative rates, but the actual rates implemented by the city will... But the actual rates implemented by the city will be based on actual costs. So if Mid Valley only implements a four percent rate adjustment one year, you would, you would pass only four percent on to the customer. So this was just, this rate plan was just illustrative to give you an idea of what the potential rate impacts would be based on our best available knowledge currently. So this chart illustrates the typical residential customer who's receiving refuse, so solid waste garbage, recycling and organics pickup. So the typical bill would increase from twenty-seven sixty per month up to thirty-five forty-eight per month. And that is based on actual costs from Mid Valley disposal. And then the orange line for the rest of the years is the illustrative rate based on estimated five and a half percent inflation. So I conducted a survey comparing Kingsburg's current and proposed typical residential bill with other local agencies. And you'll know, it does say April, so I'll give some comments about potential rate increases of other agencies in just a moment. So many of your other local agencies are also served by Mid Valley. And with the, with the rate increase, Kingsburg's typical bill would go towards the high end of the, the rate chart here. And I, I did some calling around to try and see if anyone else has a rate increase, you know, planned and didn't get a lot of information. But I will say, across the state, I'm seeing big rate increases for many, many other cities due to that SV thirteen eighty-three organics waste recycling. So this is a very common trend throughout California of fairly significant rate increases for solid waste service. So I have just one brief slide on street sweeping, which is under the solid waste enterprise at the city. So current revenues are about a hundred and forty thousand and actual expenses are about two hundred and eighty thousand. So rates need to increase almost double to even cover costs. And these are based on actual expenses from the Central Valley Sweeper, your service provider, as well as city overhead and then that refuse disposal of the swept material. And then you can see that the actual rates reflect almost, not quite a doubling, but almost due to that cost increase. So to wrap up, we've had a lot of review at the city. We've been very careful and thoughtful about different rate options, exploring the health, the financial health of the solid waste enterprise. We've had a number of public meetings. All the budget information that we base the rate study on is public information. The proposition to eighteen notice was mailed to customers in accordance with, you know, the law, the rules. And tonight we have folks submitting their protests, which can be received by the end of the public hearing. And then, as I mentioned, if fifty percent of the protests, fifty percent of the rate payers submit a protest, then the rates cannot be implemented. If there is no majority protest, the first rate can go into effect September first, followed by July first rate increases thereafter. And then again, just to emphasize one more time, that future year rate increases are based on inflation. So actual costs will be passed along to the customers. And that's what I have. Thank you.
This is the time for council discussion. I did have a question on one of the slides. On the April twenty twenty-two comparison. Can go with the other cities. So that was as of April twenty twenty-two and ours is proposed. Do we know any of the other cities proposed?
So that's what I was saying, right? I attempted to call around and folks didn't call me back or I tried to gather some additional data and didn't, didn't make a lot of progress. So I do apologize for that, that we don't have more up-to-date information about either current or proposed rates.
So all of the other cities are current. They're not what we're looking at. They may be in the process of.
Correct, current as of April.
Okay, thank you. Any council discussion clarifications before we open it up to the public?
So Mayor, can I make my recommendation?
Yes, sorry about that.
No problem. So staff does recommend that council open the public hearing, which we've done. And at the conclusion of the public hearing, absent a majority protest, as determined by the city clerk, approve Resolution twenty-two dash zero forty-two implementing the proposed rates as presented effective on or after September first, two thousand twenty-two and authorize an annual increase, annual increases on July first through two thousand twenty-six. You do have some alternatives, absent a majority protest as determined by the city clerk. Council has an option to reduce the proposed rate increases, but that may increase the rates above the proposed. And council could take no action. Like I said, we can open up to a public comment.
Thank you. Council discussion before we open it up to public comment. Any questions, clarifications?
I'd like to hear from the public.
Okay, then we'll close council discussion and we'll come back to that. So right now I'd like to open public comment. We have a lot of folks here. So we're going to start in the back. If you want to come up to the mic for a public comment on this agenda item, anybody in the back row? Second from the back row? Third?
Evening, council. Madam Mayor, my name's Robert Allen. I'm in District Three. I protest this, this increase due primarily for the elderly, there are fixing terms, the recessions nine point two that was put forth by the governments. Everybody's tightening their budgets, food is going up, amenities are going up. I don't think it's the right time to be increasing the solid waste. Granted, we may have not had an increase in recent years, but now because the recession's nine point two and everything's going up, it affects the senior citizens, it affects retirees, it's not a good time for it.
Anyone else in the third row from the back? Nope. Okay, the second row from the front? Okay, the front row?
My name's Terry Lane. I'm a transplant from Reedley, so I'm new to Kingsburg government, brother to Steve Lane. My question is this, does Kingsburg have a developmental person that applies for grants, that writes grants? Do they have someone that applies for the free money to get for the city to help? To help as a cushion to cover things that basically inflation is killing the people with? That was my question. So.
Yes.
You do?
It's generally broken down by departments. City manager, you can probably clarify that. But anytime we get opportunities for grants for any projects, including, you know, things that would be similar to this, those go through the city manager and they get assigned out for whoever is in charge of that specific division to write those grants to try.
I, I read all the time that there's a lot of money available and we should be going after anything we can get our hands on to, to cover things like this. To help make up the difference for something, this inflation that's killing all of us. Anyway, that was my point. Thank you.
Actually, the next agenda item, you'll see that we have grants on there also. So, thank you. Okay, anyone else? We need to hear from you guys.
Yeah, Lee Darlene, I'm a resident. I'm against it too. Just on the sweeper, okay? That, that increase is ridiculous, in my opinion, because the service, I don't think he's deserving two dollars a house. I don't have any houses. Can somebody tell me how many houses we have in this town? Five thousand, six thousand?
A little over three thousand.
Three thousand. That's it? But we got thirteen thousand.
Ten thousand people, but.
Yeah, well, three thousand. Okay, I gotta change my figures then. Okay, right now he's getting three. So that would be. Yeah, that's gonna, that's gonna increase his, his fees by a hundred percent. Now, there's days, I pull my car into the driveway and I said, and he doesn't, he doesn't come. So then I, I park it and then the following week, he does come. I never can figure out what days he comes. And sometimes he sweeps when it's raining, you know? And they won't pick up any leaves like we used to. In the old days, we used to pile them up and the city would come and pick up all the leaves, you know? So now we're just stuffing them all in the recycle. Now, I think that's too much. I could see raising him maybe two fifty, maybe three dollars per house, you know? But that's, that's going to be a big increase just for his expenses. He's probably, does have in price a diesel or a gas, whatever he uses in his sweeper, you know, and wear and tear maintenance, you know? But I don't think it deserves that much. So I think somebody used Common Core math to figure that one out. That's it for me.
Madam Mayor, if I could, just, just to clarify, it's not an increase to the contractor. So the contractor, the council approved a, a contract with the street sweeper that was a five-year rate lock, a little over a year ago. So it's just to cover the cost, the existing cost. So he's, he's not getting more. Well, it's operating at a deficit right now. So it's being subsidized by the general fund.
Can I have you come back up to the mic? Can I have you come back up to the mic if you're gonna, if you're gonna ask more questions? Thank you.
Well, maybe we can contract with a new young guy that wants to start a new business. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, so the last time we did, we put up for proposals and selected the lowest cost provider.
Okay, no other questions?
Thank you. Okay, this is the time for open, for public comment. Anyone else? Okay, then I will close public comment and we will have continued council discussion. So any discussion on this agenda item?
I guess I'd like to just say something about specifically the reason that we're here. I have a great mic, I know. So I just want to talk for a second about part of the reason that we're here. The biggest reason we're here is the Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three. The way that that is changing the rates for the entire state, that's getting pushed down to us from the state of California. No, I, I shouldn't speak for everybody, but I'm gonna go out on a limb and say nobody up here wants to increase rates at all. But we also didn't want thirteen eighty-three to pass. And when it did, they implemented these costs, these fees, and everything changed with picking up trash, with the organics, with the compost, with everything, it changed. So that's getting pushed down to us at a level that we can't stop that, other than to continue to lobby Sacramento, which is what we're doing. I know that we've been up to Sacramento to meet with our state representatives to try to fight this, because we hate it. We do. This isn't great for our town and we understand that, but we still have to be governed by that state and those people that are elected in Sacramento, which is why we're here today. That's just one of those things that I think is important to really establish that this is not something that the city of Kingsburg wanted in any capacity. This is something the state of California is absolutely pushing down on us through these costs. For the processes for like, why are we using the street sweeper? Why are we using them? Every one of our contracts go out to a bid. We have a bid process. We vet to make sure that they can meet our needs. And we send them out and anybody that is capable of doing it can bid on these projects. And we always go with the lowest cost that can provide the correct services for our town. So even with the street sweepers and stuff like that, when those came through, we're gonna pick the best deal that we can every time, because we don't want to waste city dollars. So I know that this is an astronomical number that we're increasing and I get that. And if this was like a city level, we were doing it for the city, that's one thing. But this is this SB thirteen eighty-three that's getting pushed down. So I just really want to emphasize that, kind of before we go much further, how much that has impacted us. And it's because of elected officials that are in Northern California, they're in Sacramento. That's the laws that we're dealing with. Because we don't have a choice on compliance with thirteen eighty-three, because if we did, it might go a different route. But the reality is, if we don't comply with this, every single truck that comes through and picks up trash, that takes it to the dump, we could be fined up to ten thousand dollars as a city per truck. And I can't speak to how many trucks come through in an average week, but that's a lot of ten thousand dollars stacking up, a lot. So just kind of before we get into anything else, I just wanted to throw that out there foundationally, so we know why this is getting pushed down to us, at least why we're here today, if that makes sense.
Just to piggyback on what Councilmember Purcell had said, they're even going to put geo-tracking, I think that's what you call it, in the trucks with like cameras to know which house was not separating like they should. It's coming down to like micromanaging from the state, it really is. And so part of, part of looking at this is, when they know it's your house, we can't pass on a ten thousand dollar fine for you throwing lettuce in the wrong bin or a pizza box with pizza in the recycle. It's ridiculous. But you also saw how much we're in the hole. And as a city, we have to be fiscally responsible. And so we're trying to figure out the best way to do that. It's being pushed down on us, it's being pushed down to you. Honestly, we get the protest. If we have more than fifty percent, like I don't know what we're gonna do as a city to make up for what we're gonna be in the hole with. You know, we are going to be losing a lot of money because of this. So it's a tough situation. It's tough times right now. We're filling it with everything. And we don't want to be doing this. We don't want to be having this discussion. We're citizens. We're gonna, it's gonna impact us also. It's just a really tough situation with not a lot of options. So, I don't know. Any other council discussion or input?
Council from me. So just a couple of other things. So the, the street sweeping, like, like you've mentioned, that rate is locked. That was a five-year contract. The additional cost has been in the disposal of what the street sweeper is picking up. In terms of grants, working with Mid Valley, we were able to get a grant to, to cover some of the SB thirteen eighty-three requirements for procurement to help us purchase mulch and also to work on, on education material. So we are looking for and actively searching for ways to cut down on the cost. But I mean, they're limited, especially for, for this aspect of it. And then in terms of implementation, you know, like I said, we'll work with Mid Valley to get that implemented, to get the education material out. Like I said, they're great at going out and doing community events and putting things out. But like I said, the procurement's a big piece. That's not only for this year, but it'd also continue on in, in all the subsequent years as well. So it's not just picking up the disposal and the trash and the recycling, but it's also having to procure things to offset some of the greenhouse gases that, that SB thirteen eighty-three is requiring, so.
Thank you. Any other council discussion?
Yeah, you know, I have, this is a tough situation for us up here. As you heard, we have not increased these fees since two thousand nine. And as Brandon said, it's, it's mainly, we're doing, doing this mainly because of SB thirteen eighty-three. And unfortunately, it's like the gentleman said, you know, unfortunately, we're in a recession. I know our government doesn't want to say it's a recession, but it's a recession. And I don't, I don't think that when this bill passed, you know, nobody foresaw recession. I mean, I think a lot of us saw it coming, had an idea with the government we have right now, with their policies, that a recession could happen, and it has happened. But we're in, we're in a tough spot up here. We do not want to raise rates. But we don't want the city to, also to be paying a lot of extra money, because we're not paying, you know, raising the rates that we have not raised since two thousand nine. So we're in a tough spot and I know that myself kind of having second thoughts because of the recession, you know, when we were up here last month, or in May, I believe, when we first went over this, we were just, we weren't in a recession at that time. It was just inflation, but. So we just would hope you guys can understand, you know, the position we're in as, as leaders in the community and trying to make a right decision for, for, for our, our city and, and, you know, be physically responsible for, for the city and, and, you know, the citizens too, because well, it's kind of hard for the citizens to believe that we're doing the right thing, but, you know, it's a tough, it's tough on us, so. but, you know, it's tough, it's tough on us, so that's what I have to say, yeah.
Alex, how much are we in the hole? Because we haven't raised rates?
I think it's roughly a quarter million dollars a year at this point. Each year that adds.
Fortunately, the governments are sticking it to us.
So, I think this is part of the, this is another example of these unfunded mandates that we're dealing with in Sacramento. They're, they're not afraid to come down and give these mandates like this without any funding. I know the city manager and I were up in Sacramento a few months back, specifically fighting with the state senators about these unfunded mandates, both for water, for trash, and for all these other things that are coming down from Sacramento. And, you know, regardless of what this vote ends up being, you know, if we end up 50 plus 1, we'll say no, and we'll keep fighting Sacramento. If it's less than 50, or it passes, we're still gonna fight Sacramento. They need to continually be told by us. I figure that's kind of why we're here. You elected us, you put us here to fight that fight in Sacramento, and we're doing that. And regardless of how this goes, that's gonna continue to happen, because we need to continually let them know, and they need to hear from everyone, not just us, that this is on the backs of the citizens. These unfunded mandates from Sacramento, they have to get paid by somebody. The city only has X amount of dollars. And we're already a quarter million in the hole, so there's no way around this when they pass these through to us. So, we're gonna keep fighting that. We have another meeting with more legislators at the end of the year. We're gonna bring this up again, regardless, because we have to keep telling them how this impacts us in the valley. Sacramento is different than the Central Valley, we understand that. They don't sometimes understand that. They think these mandates are across the board. Because the big concern we have, too, is this doesn't just impact citizens. This impacts businesses. If you look at those business rates, those business rates are substantial for these small-town businesses. That's what we're trying to pass on to Sacramento, is we can't sustain these businesses if you're gonna keep pushing these mandates to us that we can't afford here. And regardless of how this goes, I know we've, every one of us council members have had this conversation. We're gonna keep fighting this in Sacramento. We're gonna keep trying to get these unfunded mandates paid for somehow. The state has a surplus of money, and we're fighting for those dollars as much as we can. But as of today, we're at a point where we kind of have to make a decision about this, because we can't keep floating this quarter million dollars a year in the hole, plus these additional mandates that are coming down. So, that's, that's my last statement about it for now.
Any other council discussion before I close the hearing? Okay, then we will close the public hearing. And the next item is our city clerk is going to announce the election results.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, to constitute a majority protest, the city must receive 50% plus 1 of the 3,831 parcels that would be affected. That number would be 1,916. The city received 238 protest ballots. There's an absence of a majority protest.
Thank you. So, our possible council action tonight is in the absence of a majority protest as determined by the city clerk. We can look at approving the Resolution 2022-042 implementing the proposed rates as presented effective on or after September 1st, 2022, and authorize annual increases on July 1st through 2026.
Looking for a motion?
Mm-hmm.
I'll make that motion with a heavy heart.
I'll second.
All in favor?
I'd be all, so...
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're sorry that we had to do that. Item 6.2, Kingsburg Tri-County Healthcare District Grant Awards 2022. Staff report by Community Services Director, Adam Castaneda.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. On a different subject, I am happy to present to you some more funding that's coming the city's way through Tri-County. So, as you're aware, Tri-County does a grant cycle every year, starting in January. Applications are submitted in May, and then they use a couple of months to grant awardees. And this year, they had a focus. Tri-County focused on mental, physical health care, nutrition, exercise, and diabetes. That opened up a lot of opportunity for the Community Services Department and the Fire Department to submit multiple grants on behalf of the senior center, senior programming, and then fire and public safety through the Fire Department. So, we are happy to announce that we are going to be receiving four grant awards this cycle. It's about $674,000 in total for all four grants. The first one is through the Kingsburg Community Services Department, the Senior Center Kitchen renovation project. It's $220,000. And they're gonna be able to redo the Senior Center Kitchen to give us an adequate space that's both, that's approved through Fire Department and through the county to offer senior meals Monday through Friday. It's a free service we offer to the seniors, and we're just happy to continue to do that. And then, the other three grants are going to be for the Fire Department, paramedic ambulance personnel. It's an agreement they had last year. This is the second-year portion for that, and that's $366,000. Paramedic ambulance personnel wage adjustment for the adjustments this year. It's about $7,300. And then, the Lucas CPR devices, which will be new for the Fire Department to have equipped on their engines and allow them to offer more effective CPR. And that's $80,000. So, tonight, staff is just seeking council approval to accept all four individual grant contracts as presented by Tri-County Healthcare District. Once the contracts are signed, the staff will begin working on project planning and implementation. And all four grant contracts have to be approved individually, because they're four different, four different projects, but...
Four motions?
Four motions. And that ends my report. I'm happy to answer. Any questions?
Question? It's exciting. The Senior Center Kitchen renovation, I know something that's definitely been needed for quite a while with all that they do there, and the food that's prepared out of those kitchens that needed to be updated. And then, with the ambulance, paramedic ambulance personnel and the wage adjustment, that's definitely been something that's, I know, been needed. And then, the Lucas CPR devices, I was there the day that that was shown to them, and I was just amazed on how that works. And it's kind of scary to watch it, but I know it's already saved lives since we had the ones that they were...
Loaned.
So, this is really exciting for the four that is here, so...
Yes. Great.
I know we've really been wanting to work on that senior kitchen. It's definitely needed to be done. Okay, so I will need separate motions for each. So, first and a second, starting with A, the grant for the Senior Center Kitchen renovation project. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. B is the grant for the Paramedic Ambulance Personnel 2022, Year 2.
I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. C is our grant for Paramedic Ambulance Personnel Wage Adjustment.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And item D is the Lucas CPR Device Annual Contract. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Exciting. Adam, I wanted to mention that the Senior Center looks amazing with the new paint, too.
A lot of projects the city's completed, and so hopefully I'll give you a next, an update in a couple of months. But everything is all...
Thank you. Onto 7.1, Community Services Commission, nothing to report. 7.2, Public Safety Committee.
We meet next week.
7.3, Chamber of Commerce.
Next week.
7.4, Economic Development. 7.5, Finance Committee.
Have not met.
7.6, nothing to report. 7.7, SKGSA.
I don't think there has been a meeting. I know Member Rotato's not here, but I don't believe that there's been any meetings since the last meeting.
7.8, Downtown Business Improvement District.
We discussed letting, the chamber did a good job, they said, of calling downtown businesses to let them know that Friday night, this Friday, and the trolley will be going from the park to bring people downtown also, so that they can try to, if they want to stay open, because it'll be more of a traffic. And they discussed the rezoning of Draper, that was discussed in front of council, and the board is for it, and they're asking for it to be on their next agenda, so they can have a level to go in.
Thank you. 7.9, Council of Governments. So, a little update from Caltrans, from the roadway rehab, from southbound 99 McCall Avenue in Selma to just north of Merced Avenue in Fowler. Construction's still in progress, and the traffic shift was done this week, if you've driven up that way. Northbound traffic shifted to northbound lanes, and the southbound traffic shifted to the median. So, all northbound ramps will be opened. And now, the southbound ramp, on-ramp at Merced Street and southbound off-ramp at Manning Avenue will now be closed. Traffic alert has been sent to all the stakeholders, and Caltrans met with CHP, city representatives of Selma and Fowler on July 13th, inform them all about these switches. So, now it's the opposite direction that we gotta deal with, so that's what's going on with them. Thank you. 7.10, Council Member Reports. Any, anyone have anything to report?
Nope.
Yalvis event had a good turnout.
Good, it was fun. Okay, then, on to 7.11, City Managers Report, Joint Planning Commission Workshop.
Just reminder of the joint meeting next Thursday evening. It's the sort of the kickoff to the multi-jurisdictional housing element, which we're required to undergo, which we're doing in conjunction. There's a regional effort along with Fresno Council of Government. So, I'll be a consultant, and it's just a workshop for both the planning commission and city council. That's all I have.
And I will not be at that meeting. My, my mom's having surgery, so I will be with my mom that day.
Is it at 6 o'clock?
Yes. There will be dinner.
Item 8, Future Agenda Items. We have none listed. Item 9 is to adjourn our regular Kingsburg City Council meeting.